We should do that. So that they can then disperse. Because it was clear as we were talking with them. That in actual fact, they were not here for the session that we are at. They're not here to discuss the section twenty-five amendment. They only came to talk to the members of parliament. Because they heard that the MPs would be here today. So we thank you very much for cooperating with us in that regard. Thank you so much, Mr. Nishu. We are members of parliament, supported by the team on my extreme left, another team, sorry, my team on my extreme right, another team on my extreme left. So these are members supporting the members of parliament. On the table are members of parliament. I will introduce them. So that you know who's here to listen to the views of the public. I'll start with myself. I've been asked to chair this session. My name is Cyril Gaba. I'm a member of parliament and a member of the committee. It's called the section twenty-five ad hoc committee. Because it is tasked to initiate and introduce legislation amending section twenty-five of the constitution. That legislation has been published for public comments. It's in circulation. I saw all of you have the copies of the draft text. We are thankful that you came to talk to us today. We had the opportunity for written comments, written submissions. That opportunity has passed. We are now dealing with oral submissions. We have been throughout the country. And this is the last province that we are visiting. And we may have to go back to Limpombo. And but according to the schedule, this is the last province that we are visiting to receive oral presentations, oral submissions. Having received the written submissions and during the period when members of the public were requested to write to us. I was still dealing with the introductions. And on my left is Honorable Moro Atsela. Honorable Moro Atsela. On my right, thank you so much, Honorable Moro Atsela. On my right is Honorable Nisoma. We are expecting another member of the committee. I want to introduce him in his absentia. Because he will come at any time from now. His name is Honorable Nokoma Sipa. You'll see him when he walks into into the meeting. I also want to introduce Honorable Mabato Mokausa. A member of parliament. It's also my honour to introduce Natasha Changuini. A member of parliament. So that takes care of the introduction of people who are seated at the head table. It is my honour and privilege again to introduce Chief Dumisani Msolo. Thank you so much and welcome. And Chief Galada Alzolidanile. Chief Mazinho Zolitenga. And thank you so much and and welcome. We are pleased to have you today. Right, colleagues, I think we are done with the introductions. And I said we are a committee tasked to initiate and introduce legislation amending section twenty-five of the constitution. That's a bill of rights. It's a section in the bill of rights. It talks about the issues of land and property. So I'm happy that you all have the text before you. And I wish you well as we engage in these discussions. One may ask a question. Why are you here again? Because parliament dispatched a team in twenty-eighteen to talk about the same subject. And we now hear members of parliament coming to us again for the same issue. The process of the first process, which was driven by the Constitutional Review Committee, was to establish the desirability of amending section twenty-nine, sorry, twenty-five. I always, you know, confuse the two sections, section twenty-five, not section twenty-nine. To establish the desirability of amending section twenty-five of the constitution. That committee has concluded its work and reported back to parliament with a recommendation that indeed people out there want this section amended. Having received the recommendations and adopted the recommendations of the committee, parliament in its wisdom established this committee. This committee with just one mandate, one task, to initiate and introduce legislation amending section twenty-five. Now, this committee is here after having deliberated and agreed on the text to be published for public comments. This text is now before you. But the constitution says that parliament must facilitate public involvement in its lawmaking process. Now, we are doing exactly that. We have met as a committee, deliberated and produced a draft bill. But before we take it to parliament for debate and adoption, as for debate and adoption as legislation, we must first hear what the the public has to say. We must listen to the views of the public on the bill that is before parliament. That's exactly what we are here now to do. The parliament's last debate, Lesos Paramiso, the committee, ECRC, Constitutional Review Committee. The parliament would try against the committee. We will not get easily so deba. No, I'm telling you, also amend, also create a constitution. That's the committee, the committee. The committee, the deba. No, I'm telling you. That's the thing, I'm going to sue the parliament. Good thing, good thing, so subject, my views, the public, I must subject this draft to the views of the public. Having listened to the views of the public, this is what we finally agree upon as a committee. And then send the and then draft a report, which will then be presented before parliament for a debate and adoption. In that way, the no matter what happens, in that way, that bill becomes an act of parliament. That's what we are here to do. I must say that we are here, but there's another process going on elsewhere in the Western Cape. We thought we cannot cover Western Cape if we move altogether as a group. But we must split ourselves into two, that when one group is here, another group is elsewhere. Yesterday, we were somewhere else when the other group were in another place. But all these two processes converge into one process. A committee meeting that will consider both the written and the oral submissions, deliberate, refine the bill, produce a report, and then submit the report to parliament with a recommendation. Then parliament will then deliberate and then produce the 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 final act and pass the act, they have passed the bill into law. Now, having said that, I want all of us to cooperate. I'm told that there are two mics. There's a a mic upstairs, there it is. And there's also a mic here. Just before me. What I'm going to do, I'm going to call you, I will take ten on my right and then take ten, no, I'll then take ten here. Ten. And then take five on the up there, because I'm looking at the numbers. Take ten and then take five. And then come back for a second round and then take ten and then take five. But of course, that depends on how well we we are doing. So that's what we are going to do. But I just want to say to you that you are this number and, you know, maintaining a distance because we are observing the COVID regulations. The only time you drop your mask, the only time you drop the mask is when you are speaking. Keep distance, put your mask on, and then respect all other laws or sort of regulations that pertain to the pandemic. We don't want people to be infected just because they associated themselves with this process. Now, having said that, I'm going to start calling hands. But before I do so, you'll be given a sticker. A sticker basically confirms that I have given you granted permission to speak today. As soon as you have spoken, drop the sticker in the box. Alright. We, once you have, if you have a written, you were reading from a written text. Would appreciate if you drop that written text into the box as well. If you think the if you think that test is going to help us. Because we are limited by the space and we can't exceed the numbers that we have today. We will have to ask you that after you have spoken, to leave the hall so that we can let a person who is outside to come in and also participate. We have agreed that we'll do that in batch of ten. So you just step out. As soon as you are ten outside, we ask you to leave the the precinct so that we can let in another ten, so that they also come and participate today. Is that clear? That is if there is people outside who want to come inside. But if there is no one outside who wants to come inside, and we may as well have to continue like this. And but should we expect that there is a demand, then we'll have to accommodate that demand. Alright, and thank you so much, Mr. Nishu. And then what I'm reminded by my colleague is that there is a three minutes rule. Three minutes rule. And please don't exceed three minutes. I'm sure you can say everything you want to say within a three minutes. Right, now I start. We don't want to exclude anyone. And you are comfortable to speak in any language. We have people who speak those languages here. And rest assured that anything you say today is captured by, you can see the mics and everybody. And it's also on TV as well. And so please be assured that we, everything you say would go on record, even if I don't write anything here, but it will go on record. Right, now I start. And number one. You want to speak, number one is number one, right? Number two is number two. Number three. Number four, number five, alright? Okay, let me start afresh. Number one, are you two, are we together? Number one? Number two, there's number two there. Number three? Three between those two, number three, yes, that one. Number four, that that one, yes, that one, number four. And number five, right at the back there. Right, can I get a hand to decide? I said I will take ten. And then number one, in course. And then number two. Number three. Number three. Number three, there's number three over there. Alright, I think we're fine. So so it means that I have five, three, I have eight. Eight on the floor of the hall. Oh, eight, nine. Alright, eight, nine. And I have nine, alright. So you now have numbers, you don't have to form up a queue, so you'll move in one by one. Let me go up to the up there on the on the grandstand. And I have a hand here, one. Thanks, Mr. Shom. Then a hand, number two. Right, any other hand over there? There's a hand over there, number three. Number three. Alright, so I can only get three hands from from the pavilion. Alright, I have nine hands here and three hands on the pavilion, right? Let us start. And we are going to time ourselves and Mr. Nishu is maintaining the record. You are number one, sir. You introduce yourself, state who you are, and then launch into your presentation. Thank you so much.
Nothing about us without us, land or debt.
Number two?
Well, we need and I think we may say, oh, yeah, I need and I need to be and I need to be a kid for him. Oh, when the guy, you sing a ma cost case, it's a runner, he is city, he is child development. Kufneka sipatele, ele genyanga, it three hundred and fifty. See, as well, sing a baby, but I'm since Africa. Why is it developer in the community, Zito? Now, I don't know that it, why, if never sipatele, it three hundred and fifty. Si pinde, see the next call. Pam, go, go, register, she. Kufneka, who am the enemy, come, I mean, day, it is, I, you, in the, the list, agreement, in, in, si, but, I, 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 I. God, I see, see developer, who, who, I, 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 I.
Thank you so much. I think, can we do this? To give her time to to sanitize the mic. Now that I've taken number two here, I will take number one on top. And then come back and up and back and up, so as to give time to sanitize the mic. Number one, and I will take you now.
Man, this is Buddhist. Comrade Chaperson, Comrade Gaba, I am very much worried and disturbed the way you are doing this public participation. I want to open by saying so. This is not a public participation to get the quality and the response of the African people. It is for you to dig your boxes that you have done public participation. You cannot allow a situation when there are people outside that are not entering in a room, you think that we must continue here. In fact, public participation in Khayelitsha alone warranted a week for you to get the public opinion. It is important that I prelude by doing so. Because we are in this crisis as a nation, we are in this mess, because people always run for the majoritarianism instead of looking to the quality of their engagements. We are in this mess of trying to talk about land expropriation and trying to amend section twenty-five, which does not solve the crisis of the landlessness of the African people at all. This constitution of South Africa warranted a total referendum because the conquered land are still in the hands of the foreign aggressors. The settler colonial state, as it still stands. The settler colonialist state, as it still stands today, is still in charge of the processes. And if the constitution that we have designed, a betraying constitution in nineteen ninety-four, had not addressed the right of the conquered. As be the general of that time Lieutenant Harry Smith in eighteen thirty-six, he said they have a right to conquer the African land. Hence, the hundred years of resistance in the Eastern Cape has took place. I want to submit to you that it is always said that the African people, they dispossessed, they oppressed with nothing in this constitution, has to forget the past. It's always said to us, we must forget the past. Yet, the people who had conquered us had not forget the past. They are still holding their land. And we are landless, yet we are the African. And the constitution is very silent. If you have to follow, you have to go to high court, to Constitutional Court. And how much to enter in a Constitutional Court? The issue of the national question, the land dispossession and the right to self-determination and the sovereignty of the Azanian people are not at all talked about in the constitution. In fact, we are going to ponder around, even if we talk about this as an amendment. You cannot respond on legalities on a political conquered nation. Because you want us to start in nineteen thirteen, preluded by the nineteen oh-nine South African Act, the nineteen thirteen Land Act that this section speaks to. At that particular moment, the conquered territory had been taken along to the African people, and they have no land at all. So this is a fraud again, similar to the Cordesa movement. And you continue to do that and pretending to make a public participation. It is not about us to sing and celebrate here. It is about to be context and in a contextual position. The issue of the landlessness of the African people today in Kailecha is full of hokies, there is crime, there is everything. Because the African people had been, not been given the land space. Very soon, there will be cutwaters to disturb those people.
Sorry, o three minutes us upelin.
Upelin umsusu.
Yes, upelin umsusu.
I, I hope you will take this time, you will not get irritated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Lydia and the surname is Bwata. I am situated in Atlantis. I am also a co-essen leader within the Kuchekwa House. And I would also like to acknowledge my chieftaincy that is in the house. We have, from the Grikwa Royal House, we have Commissioner Olifant and also one chief, Swanapu, if they can indicate. And then I have, we have Gaup Captain Fredericks from the Traaman Traditional Authority also in the house. I just would like to acknowledge the leadership. Yeah, my contribution is as follows. Is that the South African state, as a member state of the United Nations, who have, and a signatory of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, are obliged to uphold, in our opinion, the rights of indigenous people as stipulated therein. In particularly, to record, one of the articles are speaking to the recognition of the historical ownership of the indigenous people. And in our opinion, in particular to the first indigenous people of, of the area. The articles also are speaking to the prior informed consent that needs to be required from the indigenous people who has a footprint in that, in that particular area, that prior and informed consent should be given or granted by us or required from us should any changes or implementations is proposed by the state or want, want to be done. So we are also saying that we, as the present day descendants of the Koi and the San, who has been categorized as colored by Article Thirty, is saying that this is our ancestral land. The west coast of, of the Western Cape and obviously the entire South Africa. When Yanfandribic came, I made mention to the fact that I am from the Kuchekwa Territory. And when Yanfandribic, in his early days of arrival, recorded in his diary when he found our forebearers, Yahu was the then-king Odosowa with his military general, Hunemekwa, Hunna As, Hunema, which he found here. So we would also like the state and this house to recognize that the land dispossession of our First Nation, the San and the Koi people, due to wars and genocide and unilateral legislation has legislated and displaced us from, from our land. So therefore, we are so, are disconnected from our land. Everybody since the dawn of colonialism came and settled here on our land irrespective of, of to who the land belong. So, in conclusion, we are firmly of the opinion that there, if it was for us, no such thing as state land. We do have local and international legal framework that confirms and is speaking to that. I'm sure that one of my chiefs will elaborate on that. So finally, we would just like the state to really recognize on the big question for us is, should you expropriate the land? Obviously, that needs to be done within consultation with the authentic owners of the land and the historical owners of the land. And the big question is to, if the land is going to be distributed or if expropriation of land is going to be implemented, we are of the opinion that it will be then expropriated from the authentic owners, and that is for us a major concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I'm now going to the top and over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Chepessin. Good afternoon to the house. My name is Andile Lili. I stay here in Kailecha. I have a submission here from the African National Congress. The ANC supports the expropriation of land as just an equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and expropriation of land without compensation. Part of that process, we are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC land reform is about redressing historic injustices and dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and ensure food security. One, we submit that on section twenty-five clause one, four, five, six, and nine should remain as they are. Two, on clause two, we make the following amendment. Add a new subclause two, see, which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under conditions laid out in a law of general application. Three, on clause three, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment. To the first line of the clause, everything after that remains the same. To read as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of the compensation and the time and manner of, of payment must be just an equitable ETC. Four, clause seven, we make the following submission that the purpose of this hearing, only the text remains, is. Clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows, and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, may impede the state ETC. In conclusion, expropriation of land is just an equitable process to restore the dignity of our people. This expropriation must be done by executive authority. The executive, and only where there is a dispute, which cannot be resolved, can it then be referred to the judiciary.
Thank you so much.
Lastly, Chair, lastly.
No, 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 no. My apologies, my apologies. Mr. Gads, over to you.
Greetings, Chair. And greetings to the members of the committee, especially the members of the EFF, the leadership. Greetings to Mayor's Leadership. Ikamalam Luuzuko. I come from our Luuzuko Black Square and a member of the EFF, the only organization that cares about black people. We know others, they do not care, they pretend. Chair, without wasting your time, we are aware that this session, it was designed for us to make submission and not to make any political statement. I am part of the idea, or I would like to submit that the section twenty-five must be amended. We applaud the idea that the land must be expropriated without compensation. And therefore, Chair, I would like to submit that subsection three must be removed and it must be replaced with the clause that state that the state should be the custodian of South African natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualize the state custodianship of natural resources. We are aware, we're not going to give a political history of what happened to black people. I am aware that everyone that is here knows that black people were stripped off their dignity. And the only way to restore it, it is to give back their land. And the only way we can do it, through democratic means, it is to amend section twenty-five. The land must be expropriated without compensation. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you so much. I'm now going to my number three on the pavilion.
I would like to greet and recognize the leadership or the honorable ones that are in the hall, especially you, Mr. Chairman. I have a soft spot for you, I don't know why, but it's a good thing, eh? Sure. What, what I'm trying to say is nothing more than I could say that if I can just do only one example when it comes to land, there is nothing painful to plant a garden with your neighbors in the Eastern Cape when it's time to reap. When they see their crops, you have nothing. But you work with the same effort that which they had. And we are so honest, and the rain came, you were expecting to harvest. When we talk about, the Africans, don't talk about causes, we talk about the whole of the Africans. That's why EFF stands for that. Let's not lie. We love whites, we don't hate them. But when they came, they came to reap us. If we can try by all means to speak a lie as ANC does, it will always produce that which is producing every day because it's triggered by something. I don't blame the Hitmans from Kailecha. I don't blame the scholars who rob me now and again in Danun. I never said I'm from Danun. I don't blame no one who is doing nonsense in this country. We're sorry for that language, I'm mindful. But the pain we are feeling, whether if you go to the suburb, whether if you go to the squatter camps, it has been triggered by the allowance that which has been rendered by our former leaders. I cannot blame Dr. John Dubey. I cannot blame Baba Kuse. But the manipulation they gave to them. You must produce one leader in a rural area, that which shall be praised. It's not a bad thing anyway. But if we are being fed to look at one man for a very good reason, why we cannot take that good reason from that man and spread it to the whole nation? I am an artist, I sing gospel. In my songs, I fight no man. I have one hope. When I reach the stars, not like Lundi, not that I don't respect him, but I will take my money and make it appoint the little children that which they have not get the opportunity that we little, which I got. There shall be a change. I don't want too much money, but I want opportunities to be opened for an African child. I will go to university or I will go to a college, but there shall be a requirement. It's not like my mind is locked, my mind is working. I will end up drinking or eating drugs because your system, ANC, that was fed by the whites, says I must stand somewhere, not go somewhere. I don't see myself as a president, but I see myself as a person who can change South Africa. And I know Julius Malema, EFF, is here to change South Africa. We will die for that through life because life and death is not friends. But death brings life.
Thank you so much.
To death.
Thank you so much. Number four on the floor of the hall.
Man, tatal tuba and bull is wachala pambila, banda wa koyonze, apintla nganswin. Ikamalam ni nguyo ngabo, ungan bisbajwa hakla unfuna. I've got this proposal. I just want to make sure that this session of the amendment of the section twenty-five, it has been done in the advantage of our people, not the advantage of the politicians. Because each and every time when we drafted the policy, the beneficial, the benefit, the beneficial is of that policy, it goes to the politicians. But now I've got this question. How long is going to take to constitute the return of the land? Because we've been conducting the amendments, amendments and amendments, but the land is not yet back to the people of the, of the country. How long is going to take? And if now these amendments fail, what is the substitution of the failing of the amendments of this, of this section twenty-five? Because my worry is this. Land goes hand in hand with the resources of the country. And the resources of the country contributed to the, to boost the economy of the country. So if we've got no land, we've got no resources. And if we've got no resources, and then the economy of the country will always remain down. That is what is going to happen. And we have to take a, 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 an example and or a lesson from COVID nineteen. When the country was, was attacked by the illness of COVID nineteen, the country was under national lockdown because of National Disaster Management Act. And you can see, everything stopped because our country is more depending to the foreign investment than our own citizens. Because if we do not have the land to plant, we do not have the land to contribute. I'm sure this is a final amendment of the land. And then this, after this final amendment, we are expecting, number one, the case to be withdrawn against Julius Malema of encouraging the people to take the land. Because then it was the whistle that he made that in parliament, that there is the land constitution that made to return the land. But the parliamentary are sleeping to make sure that that constitution is working to advance the people of the country.
Thank you so much. I take number five on the stand, number five. There were only three upstairs, alright. Alright, let me take number five. One, two, three, four, five here on the floor of, number five, or it becomes number one, number one. Okay, inkosi, the call inkosi.
Man, the bull is umshala ngapambili, shabata, non kosik. Nbinalele kubo bonke o, o sebeni. N'binalele Kubobo Nke, o, ose benza, nabo, ama lungwe, paramente. Imi buto, yezo mbanga azwa. Nabashali ngokobeleleyo, ne Nkosi, zokoke la etlale, Nkosi zemve. Eh, ndingongosi umsolo, utumagute, iska shelo. Tingo mshali na ape kailicha. Le amendment bill, eh, eteta ngomshaba. Masisegele ngoguti, si kreni Senati, si bubu Kosi. Ngoguti, is timasomdomnyama, sapela mshaba, tatalo omshaba.
He lost all our rights when our land was taken from us.
Uwe segele uwe tufuti, si tinge, asikole, lomendogobana, indo etatwe nganuzula, ne etatwe, eh, geparelespa, ibe inapinde, ikokelewe, masekfane libuyele kubani gasi.
What had been taken forcefully with firearms, eh, when we needed back to be returned to the people or to the owners of it.
Si tige, angakokelewa, ugetatwa omshaba, ma onigazewe, omshaba, kubani gasi, si kasa kakulu, irradical transformation.
We expect land to be returned, given back to the people, and we are creating a supporting transformation that should happen.
Si plagene nabantu namshange, batata omshaba. Gotwa batata lo omshaba, obo ufanele kutivelo pogo, o around le area esheli kuyo, instead of ba. Batati mishaba, obupeka paga mama masberi, imishaba mi kuluwa.
We are having problems with people repossessing or taking people's land. There is a lot of land, if you consider areas that range up to Malmasberry.
Awulapet Danun, Ustia nga se mama masberi. Eh, iti ri esase pasafutuka safal.
When you move past Danun and you move to Malmasberry, areas that were here, were there, are no longer in use. All those businesses had been closed.
So imishaba benjengalea ekfanele ba, ma ibe yase yenzisa, apetlale ngabantu, uksondez abantu, nemfuno, zoklala, nes timasa.
Land like those land are land that are meant to be used by people so that people should concentrate on the needs of the people.
Imishaba yowe lukisa, namshange tatiwe, ngabantu abattingindawo kshal.
People who are lacking or no having places to have accommodation have also now taken the fields that used to be used by our sons when they go to second season schools.
Siteta ge, singa mashubi, singa makosa, singa besut.
We as food is toss us, suttus, we are all voicing out this.
Omshaba, ose zindabe nipaya asepolanti, siyao sebenzi sa, uwe lukisa, gotwa siyapadaliso.
Land on the mountains of the Berland, we are using this land to send our sons to second season school, but we have to pay or to have an amount for this land to be used.
And ispadaliswema lesmkuulu, ngabantu abatibanga banigaasi, besiandaba. Gotwa, mastabanga jetina bekfanele nguti, amasigon esete, ze tujenabbe mibesiwa, o ganya be mibelisa, bekfanele nguti askoki mali, foruma si practiceze amasigowetu.
Who alleges that they are owners of this land, demand, cater, or big amounts of monies from us. We as being inhabitants or owners of this land, we were not supposed to pay any amount for this land.
Ngakoke, iti imishaba emini, ibefanele lukse yenzisa, amasigon esete. Se i onu ngabantu abatheli go America, abatheli go Europe.
That's why I say.
Ma onu asguasukwese benzi sa, ekfanele ba, na makri chawe sisiwa, ayaguasukuti asebenza, apractize izindo saabo, bachonga nenemilo yetu, jenge sisiwa.
Supposed to be used by our people, traditional leaders, to be used as the nation, a land that have been belonging to people who are outside the country. I say thank you.
Uh, Sabonga, eh, eh, Adumagode. Uh, Sekela, always be li, um, on this left, I think it's yourself, yes. Kikalu check, wutukona, nilapapezu, oh, 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 yeah, funu benza, swagiti. Thank you so much, Juan. So can you give me a sticker? Thank you so much. Any other? Any other on top, number two, alright. So that's sticker number two, eh, over to you ma'am.
Mshali ngapambili, nenda nganiso. Yonke ipela ndiabuleso. I come from the N'fundo, N'goka. Mna ndizo umela ama fama. Kubandi ngomnye, wabantu, abashlu kumeze kilayo, nabashlu kumeze kayo, nezlo anyana zamu. Tilapi mfulin. Tineha ku ezzi fifty. Eztlala pakatwa wabantu, namdizlala nazo. Asnamshaba.
And I do not have also the land where I can use.
Abelungu. Sitelumshaba. Ngoku indwencha, eyenze kilayo, abantu ngayoktingindawo. Paye bayo kwa kama chiochio mbenga, klan da o sekuyo. Ngoku singa bandawa mnyama, bashala nezlo anyana zetu. Abanya belnyi bala, basoza bashali nazo, Nkosi.
Alright, um, on the top, eh, can I get you on the top there?
Mulin, mulin, mshin. Fighters, the Bulis, the Bulis na bashala pa pambi. No, ndo nfuni klinisa, nezoi be kupa. Siyau cha cha omshaba ona, asis manga, oba kubekui public meetings. Pati ona, ndo nfuni emphasize, tebanishele pa pambili, the panel. Each and every day, si begi ukisitu, since May, kusukunyeza ba fazbe tu, ga, gather whites, siyama ne tracts, ne law enforcement pa, yeah, bu, even go go. Landai senseka kala, for kumuvabantu from district to langa, to nyanga, cross road. Kusenseka the same thing, kwasinda ose beka kusindo sisi, izi lusisi. So, ino mna beni zaitela, apu nezabeni klabaisindo sisi, nipisi kwan. Ni asba, ngkwa ngoku, omshaba, si sa, kusukunyeza ngawap, yeah. Every day, even go ngoku, before singe napa, tezitraga kubonge nafa. We won't know ba, organizing kusido sisi, katiwe, ngosi lap, yeah. So, what I'm saying, ona omshaba, it doesn't matter, we'll take the public meetings or watch, siyau cha cha ona omshaba, yeah.
Thank you, so what do you say?
I wanna, I wanna greet everyone, um, hello everyone. Uh, my name is Welito. I stay in Montclair. Uh, and it is my pleasure to be here today with you. And we are very happy that our government is trying to communicate with us with regards to the making of laws and all of that. And I would like first to make it a point that I tell you guys that we are not here today to all say the same thing. I think we are going to have problems because if we want to fix things, we need to fight. We cannot fix things if we are all going to want to say the same thing. So with that being said, um, let me start. I, I'm not used to speaking to a lot of people, if you could bear with me. Now, what I want to say is that, uh, I think this process is not very effective. I wanna tell you why. In nineteen ninety-four, um, our government, or rather, our representatives, those people who are in power, they made people vote. And they drew a constitution. They came and created what we call elections, so that people must elect people to lead them. But what happened in nineteen ninety-four when people voted, they did not know these laws, or what was written in the constitution, or policies. Because in school, you do not teach us this constitution. The first time I held the constitution in my hand was when I was in university. Since the beginning, when I was a young child, starting in primary up to grade twelve, I have never seen a constitution. But you want people to vote for you, knowing very well that those people are not aware of these laws. They don't know why they vote for you. Now, the same thing is happening today. What is written here, most of us cannot read this thing. But you know what we want. We want the land. Now, I will not discuss what is written here because it's complicated. I'm not a lawyer on all of that. But you know what we want. This is what we want. I, I would hope there would be something like that written on the constitution. Simple English, land is not for sale in Africa, or rather in South Africa, or, or land cannot be sold. If you put it in simple English like that, then we will all understand. You know, because now I see words here such as nail, or in circumstances, or whatever. This means now, people that have money, that are able to hire lawyers, will still be able to sell their land. Using the same laws that you are saying, you are telling us that now this thing is going to make land, uh, be free, or rather, we are not going to buy land. But people that have got good lawyers, they will be able to use this same thing to sell that land, which means now, nothing has changed. And the reason things are like this is because at first Africans have been disrespected. If these people, our, our kings, were consulted, they would have told you in the beginning that land is not for sale in Africa. We are not selling land. Uh, I wanna leave it there because there is something I wanna talk about. It's just a small thing. I, I wish I was facing this direction, but it's fine. I want to talk to these people who call themselves Koi Sen. I wanna tell you something.
Evan, eh, Chief.
Because you, sorry?
Aspe liskat, it can.
Spe lili skat?
Eh, ngbona manjilapa, ugalo mu twelve twenty-three.
Okay.
My isu mu twelve twenty-seven.
Well, it's fine.
Eh, it may that I've given you an extra minute, one minute.
Especially for me?
That was special for you. Thank you so much.
It doesn't matter, but I want to tell you, this Koi Sen people, we are all black.
No, no, no.
Stop this thing.
No, we have given you an extra minute.
Should I continue?
No, 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 no.
That's the message I wanna pass to this Koi Sen people.
Alright, okay, um, can I take you, number two, on, on the stand? And then take, uh, number, who was number four here on, on the floor? I think we've concluded, yeah?
Am I allowed to speak Chair?
No, you are allowed, you are allowed to speak. Um, alright, so we'll then come back here. Eh, can you continue talking? Can I have you here, can I have you here? You can continue talking.
EFF meeting.
Alright, thank you fighters, thank you fighters. Uh, greetings Chaperson.
Alright.
Greetings Chaperson and the leadership. Greetings Chaperson and the leadership of the committee. And also giving proper respect to the chiefs and our kings, members of society, eh, civic organizations that are present. And also giving respect to the economic freedom fighters who are spearheading and leading the process that is taking place today. Chaperson, my name is Miguel Michael Pele, and I am an African. I hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution to allow for land expropriation without compensation. We find a very sad situation on the delays that have been created by government for a sole reason to allow for this particular process not to succeed. With reference to typical examples that we find in our communities, you will find that if there's a property that has been in existence before we receive our freedom, today, instead of that property or that piece of land being charged at the price when it was occupied, the government of today is going to speak to market value. That alone speaks to the amount of injustice that is being done by our government. Particularly here in the Western Cape. This thing is becoming so prominent that the A N C is slipping on duty and allowing this thing to happen. It is very painful. The last we remember, we put a government of the people. And it was supposed to be serving the interest of the people and for the people. So we want to appeal to the A N C. Use the power that you have in parliament and support this amendment so that just peace, justice can be done in this country, which will lead to justice that will be done in the continent. I thank you Chair.
Uh, thank you so much, um, on the floor of, uh, the hall. You are next, thank you.
Um, my name is Nadima Peterson. I'm an activist in Mitchell's Plain area. And I'm also a member, um, and A N C member of Ward eighty-two in Mitchell's Plain. Um, I, I, I commend the committee and I thank you for affording us the opportunity today. And I do not wish to reiterate what the other, um, speakers have said before. Um, my, my concern is geared towards the Western Cape because obviously we cannot all, the masses cannot all be, um, farmers and so forth. Um, and, and we understand that some roles are performed or should be executed through local government and so forth. My major concern is within this full start of the Western Cape here, where our land are being sold off to private developers of European descent. And understanding that, and, and oversight role needs to be done from national government, which is not seem, it, it, it's like, not happening, it's going, they're selling it off like it's going out of fish, or out of fashion. Um, so, we would love apart that spatial planning to be addressed in that regard because our people cannot all be packed up like so. because our people cannot all be packed up like so deans in, as backyard dwellers forever whilst our land are being sold off, as I said earlier on, to rich developers, um, of European descent. Um, we, I personally would welcome the, the, the ball, amendment to the ball because the minority did not compensate us when they threw us out of District Six or wherever and threw us on the flak just where we are now, saddled with all of these social ills. So we commend, um, our government for, for, um, bringing forward the, the, the ball. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much. So you were the last person I pointed, right on the floor. Um, we want to give way for the ten that is outside. Um, they are arranging that. Um, right, eh. Okay, so I'm taking another round of fans. And, uh, I thought you'd say you are covered. All right. Uh, there's one, there's only one on top. Right? See, see, it's, oh, there's two on top. Oh, there's three. There's only three on top. All right, it's you, Cece, at the corner there. And you with a blues keeper. And number three, yourself, yes, at the corner there. Are we together? And the blues keeper, number two? Yes, number two? And then him behind you? Number three, behind you? All right. I can say as well. All right, maso kubonam chelas, number three, and you, number three. Now, I've, I've three on the stand. All right, four. Okay, all right, it's fine. All right, so I have four on the stand. And, uh, I have you. Yes. Number one, yes, number one, this number one there. Number two, this one, okay, just grant it, right? All right, and him? Let's go right to the back. Eh, in the visitor, I'm a course of and if I say, out of respect and thank you so much. Right, and, um, I'm taking one at the back. Yes, yourself, at the back, yes. And then two, Cece? Yes. One at the back, no, no, right at the back. And then, and then Cece's and then Cece over there, yes, yourself. All right, and then nobody, this side? There's a boot there, yeah. No, no, that one behind. All right. And then we take these two. These two? These two, there's just two, yes. And then, and then we take this three, that three over there. And then we take these last two. These last two. All right. Okay, so I've confused numbers. So you just give yourself, eh, you'll take tens. I'll start with the top, number, by one number on the top, Cece at the corner there.
The Bulisa E leadership, national, provincial, regional, nepranchezon, nekranfosis. Okay, Mna ndi, tu, section twenty-five, maka amen. If people are willing to lower their dignity and live without toilets, electricity and water, then it surely means they are in a desperate situation. Give people their land they need it. We should not even be begging for it. Mshaba wana go wait, because.
Uh, Sabong. Do I get a sense that those who have spoken are living to give way for those who are outside? Except, eh, the, the, the chief ten C, eh, before us. Eh, my nine, my nine, my nine.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, okay.
All right. Eh, all right, over to you.
Now, wait. Um, my name is Razi. I come from Delph, White Twenty, and I'm the member of EFF. I'm also the member of People with Disabilities, South Africa. I'm the secretary general for the Western Cape. Um, my mind, for me today is, um, we have gotten a roll down and of, okay. In terms of land appropriation, we got from Eastern Cape, um, a summit from the government, which requires us to get land as a people with disabilities. And a week after that, um, they reviewed it. I don't know what was the reviewer for what process it was for. They didn't explain to us. They say we must submit again in terms of the process and what's going on. We're not sitting there in the office. We don't know what's going on. We just want the land. In terms of, um, every, everything, forestry, planting, chicken farming, pig farming and whatsoever, we know that we are capable of that. People sitting in wheelchairs, we are not stupid, we're not damn, and people not hearing aid and stuff like that, um, eyesight and all disabilities in terms of respect, I accommodate all of that. Um, what we want to acquire today is that when are we going out to get our full rights back in terms of society living? Because we are being marginalized everywhere we go. When you go to the clinic as a person in a wheelchair, the officials there, they don't like accommodate for you fully enough. They have every capacity. And they've like introduced to us another terms of learning. We want to acquire everything in terms of skill development, education and everything. But no one understands us. Even when you go into TV, you can see it's always another color of person that's like introducing in terms of hearing and in terms of explaining what's going on in. But we also want to introduce our own people, learn them sign language, learn them every skills development. Introduce that, um, my leader, introduce that times of skills. We want specific development. Everywhere, technologically, coding, introduce us. We are not, we've got people, we've got degrees, people got every kinds of skills. We want to enter every kind of development. Don't, don't use our budget. You said, um, last year, two comma five million budget for people with disabilities, but we don't see where it is. We must give it everywhere. People of our, our members in Eastern Cape are suffering. Everyone, even in tap ships, they are suffering. There are no roads, there are no ramps, there are no pavements. Pavements are being utilized for people with businesses. Those, we, we're not fighting with people with business, small businesses, but we want our way. We want our way. We want our standards, people with disabilities. Amanza! Amanza! Yeah.
Thank you so much. And then, next. Eh, on a stick and your son there, there's a to sign. Anyone who's closer? Thank you. Oh, top.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, oh, thank you. Eh, firstly, Mna ndi, Bulise Abandwana Mekaz, the leadership of the AFF, Commissant Langwini, revolusional greeting. Eh, the entire members of parliament, leadership of the AFF, the region and the province that are here, they are Bulisa. Eh, the reason that Silapa again is because in our parliament, we we, the process is just that, you know, we that's why you are here again. However, let me make my submission. Um, my name is Tolema Mapi. I, I stay in, in Maitland. I hereby declare and support the amendment of section twenty-five. Eh, so that you allow the expropriation of land without compensation. In so doing, we should, uh, remove subsection seven. Eh, no provision of this subsection must impair the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that the departure from the provision of this section in accordance with the provision of section thirty-six one. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to the subsection. We appeal, Makavani. Sanogo Yikabelung, we are here as the AFF, we will defend you and the constitution of this country. I move. Thank you.
Greetings, Chair and the committee and the community at large. My name is Cece Tutani. I reside at Kailecha, Site C. I'm also the member of the Economic Freedom Fighters. So ours is very clear, since the formation of this radical movement. So, okay, see, today, I am a submission. The state must take reasonable legislatives and other measures within its available resources to foster conditions which enable citizens to gain access to land on an equitable basis, they are willing.
Ozamama? Oh, okay, I'm talking to Blueset, sorry, Blueskeeper?
Yeah. Eh, Mole nige, we leadership here, AFF. Eh, the Bulisa Nakoni, but Chepersin Ngapambili. Na ke kamalam, di ngubon ngampana. Lapaku White ninety-three. I'm one of the street committees, Apaku Informal Settlement. Eh, ku yinchuunka kulu, in Dueselipens Quayu. Kinawa nbatlala imati tio mbene. Now, siyateela ke ba umshaba obuye le kuti, tinabant. Bangowabo, oasutuayo kakubi kuti. Iti ke ngolo ndo, sizo kwazi, no kwe tu kufumana, lomshaba, siye ken, soloko sifaka, nama tio tio mbene. Apaku nda si kwazi, u kufumana umshaba, sa ti apokona, sizo kwaza kona izinju. Zestia na si pume na pote tio mbene, ngorba nde ibona ngoki ngata viko, ndo ba, si luta umshaba, si faka ma tio tio. Ndo layo alonje, iti zasta, nje kwayo. Now, umshaba, ngobe fanguti si chongen, ngobe nguban, ye yipile mishaba, be fangisi itata. Siye ken utata kwa mishaba, engena minerals, because mishaba, ngobe ndi ibona, by si itata, mna, ile mishaba useless, la ba, which is, ay na ngeni, so kondu no yenza, mishaba, esemanzini kwa wenalo, ngazukwazi kwa umshala kakuu. Now, mishaba, be fanguti ke ngosyo itata, mishaba, pa, koma down, koma sibidiz. Siya, beso kala, papan si kwenza, bakanya kani. Ay, leno, si tati mishaba, elapale nda, engena, yo, ya no, ngeno, now, ya ibona, kala umshaba, utata, utata, la jeba, u funa, nju, kala, kandi, zipi resources, be fanguti tata, le mishaba, kanyaka, inza, kanyaka, ne resources, apokanya kani, so kwazi, u kwanza, ndo, sufuma ni missebe, si kwazi, ngoba, kala, le missebe, nze, nzo, kasi ti, esifama, kanyaka, siya koma stelen posh. Si otata kona, mishaba, lena, kanyaka, ina, yo, kanyaka, in minerals, apokana, kana, mza, kwanza, kona, ifami. No, tu ba, ni soloko nilue la, ndo ba, utata umshaba, la pe Kailecha, la umshaba, la pe Kailecha, au na, yo, mixa, au na, ndo, je kufuna njutala, si funa zodo, tinabat, si funa, kanyaka, ni ba, si kwazi, puma, le poverty, si pan, si kwayo es, abantu, abamnyama. Because si ngakaku, ndo ba, si steli apa, kanyaka, ngorba, si lambele. And most of the things, tinasienza, yo, si ngamakwala, tinabant, bamnyama. Ngorba, au wa na umshaba, si utata, yo, ulosu, bona, ba, uzati, na kautu jula, ukawle, zuchona, kala, pe tio tio mbene, au fulu, ku yakla, umshaba, uzaba, exposed, ikuu. Ndo layo, ke ngobi, iti ke ngobe, ndo layo, tinasi ngamakwala, kakuti, na bamnyama. Now, ke ngobe, we need, ndo ba, ke ngobe, siye ni kanyaka, ku le mishaba, kanyaka, because asba challenge, abant. Still, bona, ba, sasbukele pa, ba selinze, ba ti akan chongen, abant, ba, tata, njumshaba, kala, pa, au na, yo, kwa, ndo, lomshaba, nukatai. We need, ke ngobe, kuchinza, is tata, umshaba. So, tata, kanyaka, la umshaba, pa, estelen posh, la umshaba, pa, kusibidiz. Ua, kumshaba, be fanguti, atata, ke ngobe, buzo le pi, ebantwi, na bamnyama. U kwanza, ndo, si so kwazi, u kufumana, i jobs, si so kwazi, u ba, ni missebe, si so kwazi, au na, i businesses. Engos.
Eh, Sabong, ngasamama?
Mna Bulise, ku wala, Ngapambili, ne, ne parlamenta, yo, ngipela. Ela mi gama, ndi ngnomisa, uwa, kuaponi, ifani, mishala, ekrosro. Eh, mshao, mbige, kubanda, banen, tli zuezi, ngene, kwa, babslungu, koto, ndi akoli, sandi ngomie, wa matoba. Ay, abanjel, umshaba. Gettemba, no ba, ngo nineteen ninety-four, kwa kuchiwa, u kuti, sa u kufuma, umshaba. Ino ba, ke kwenze, ka, impaza, mo, koto, ndabango, ngomie, o, ay, walala, ifila, Delphia, nzu kwenze, ndatun, noksukazo. Gen nga, yo, ba, ndi trespass, andi babslungu, ke, ngoba, ndi tengba, ben, ndi, ba, ndi, ambakumshaba, wezule, leto. Koto, ke, ngempa, zamo, ke, ndabanti, fuma, nukbancho, ndi akela, ke, seni fiki, leni, kufucha. O, wa mutata, o, wa, banke, wheelchair. Mtwana, wa, e, banke, banji, ben, namji, ambani, engos. Kwa kuse, ben, ubanti, akon, banji, fisha, ubuso, bam, ngoba, o, wa, mtwana, wa, yo, ashase, loa, i rape. Go, ku, ndan, ke, banji, u kufuma, na umshaba, bo, umshaba, uzao, pangalala, ndi sitele, namji, ngaba, ndi bonka, basa, ba safe. Ndia koli, sa, kukusbal, se story, koto, nditembu, kuti, na, no, ko, no, ko, na ti, sipale, pansi, si ngabanya, ba, ndoba, sentunguin, yo, kufu, umshaba. Di babslungu, ke, ngoba, ndi, sa, chukuti, ndalale, phil, ndabanjel, Philadelphia, three days, ne nights, a corner. Gen nga, yo, umshaba, engos.
Sabong, uh, Ozamasi? Top and then Cece, let's start with you on top and then down.
Mna Bulise, ku yinkos, sizo klan. Di Bulise, ku yinkokele, ZEEFF, unational, iprovincial, eh, noriginal. Ikama, ngulukolo, ngwakwa, nzezu. Mishala, esamora, kwa sa stiches kaplasa, bangabana, wekewava, bangabana, batlala, kwa prasa.
About economic growth and economic recovery without the question of land. It must be put in the centre. So we need to industrialise, in one industrialisation, zonal industrialisation. We need our people to have jobs and we can only do that if we have the land question. And the issue, it is important that we actually speak to the issue of coysan. We are not going to eradicate you from history books. We are saying that the government must have ownership of the land to equally distribute it to all of us. We will respect you as the first people that we will find when we landed here. And also to settlers that are threatening us. They didn't even, actually, they didn't even have sense in their pockets when they set foot in Africa. But today they are telling us that they are feeding us. Today they are talking about, they are threatening us with food security. What? Ah, I'm done.
Thank you so much.
Malweni wetun. Mna ngingu tembe gachukus. Okaya, lishe istenkei, nda klasa lady friend. Ifika peka pango nineteen seventy. Mnaingule koni lwele front. Potom tu top. Na namshanjin sashale mkuwa ebeyi. Akoo oyawa ndo sienza. Diyo thukwala namshanjapas pinda yindho espesienzo ngoto twenty eighteen pahikutut. Umdo mtumela pama unkati lewati kun. Aina utetange organisation zenuzuka fandwa. Kandi sizo tetanga landosin nde ma, sizo akala ma usuke la ngoto twenty eighteen, ngogo sin daun. Umshaba ndo tya. Umshaba yondoba tina. The politician, the strong member of ANC. Because number one ANC, that is number one, no, no, no. Sma kupi letrongwe, namshanjiswa slibeyi. Si pa, si pitin. Sizo keli zinzu zetu. Na zimatch box apas zazokuwe, uchulmende uenguneze lo. Apa ka ilich. Ez ya tina. Sa ti sao ti asigi. Kuba spuni zwe mkuwa, wando anabechi babane kamira. Watu chulmende uenguneze lo, ka ebona yenana, mama gazlungu se nyanezi zingo. Watu akapu kuakwa, watu akwa banda basero benaylen. Iluani, puma banda robenaylen. Apa pinamshanjin. Machonga banda bavvela, ge exais. Alangla shaleto. Izidu zetu zakeli, zanokfido nomi nyumpu. Na si tetango umshaba betan, masi ngayezbe ndoka bani. Ye ye tusonke. Endangon nden, keni nden ngayeva na. Ilenda makoysan, tinasugasashale temeshi. Namadu me valla, beswaka paga tikuabo. Komkibela, mba kona sniyo nyoba esiyako, butime twenziko, kola ngema zo. Mabukuma mabukwa mtuti manfunis, take school, take school. Masi ngayani take mazi apum. Akwa mtu chambi onglo nyumpu. Puti kantera sasigana mibutonge lakeshi. Sasine ngoke. Ez namshaba ngofuro no tetwangazo. Zedani zebala mtuzetu sizo kele. Iyu nanzila usitwa oftekan, usinyusa ri renge ongele miti, koto sasoke. Si patalima, wanga patalima mas. Na osani ni kuti, tina singa masha. Anisa ba guta, na osuani megepa, eska matin zemle donaita tab. Pide kasa ofoto, nisbe.
Thank you very much. Greetings to leadership and to the committee members who are here. Di bulisena, kuin goos in dia kashel. Dia bulis. Ikamalamdi wandile. I wandile husin kasebe. Reciting at Cape Town, word fifty-nine. Hereby declare that I support the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa to allow the expropriation of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial to the decolonisation of our society, for guaranteeing redress, for colonial and apartheid land dispossession, dispossession, and for ensuring equitable redistribution of land in South Africa. Chairperson, I propose that we remove section three and replace it with this following passage. The state should be the custodian of all South Africa's natural resources, inclusive of land, mineral resources and water. And relevant legislation should be passed to clearly define and contextualise state custodianship of natural resources. I would like to continue, Chair, to propose also the following: removal of subsection seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform. And in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from the provisions of this section is in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-six-one. Parliament must enact the legislation referred to in subsection six. Chairperson, what I am putting forth here, if I were to summarise what I've submitted, Chair, the return of land back to our people simply means the following. It means the restoration of the dignity of our people. Without land, Chair, there is no life. Without land, we don't have a place that we can call home. Without land, we don't have a place that you can be proud of as African people. We will continue to be landless in the land of our forefathers and forebears. What was submitted to you, Chair, and the committee is to persuade you to ensure that this section is indeed amended so that the restoration of the dignity of our forebears, those who stood and defended this land. When Francisco de Almeida arrived here in fifteen ten, most people make reference to sixteen fifty-two. There was an incident in fifteen ten. When Francisco de Almeida arrived here, he wanted to take land by force, but he was responded to, he lost his life. Chairperson, I am done. This must be amended. Section twenty-five must be amended. That land must be expropriated without compensation. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you so much.
Uh, kela dumedi sakao feela. Libisolaga kina tlabanele, ketsuakili gokulete. Mine will be brief and very short. Na ketrore kela dumela, nalohore, the land should be expropriated without compensation. And I would propose the following amendment. Subsection two. I submit that it should be amended and read as follows. Property may be, sorry, property may be expropriated. And then, A, should read as follows. Only in terms of law of general application. And then, B, should then be for a public purpose or in the public interest. Thank you.
Ma, ndibulishe. Kumatholi omthonya. Basale ngapambili. Chairperson. Ime buuto. Especially AFF. Go tabo, katalwin. Aba, uh, ime members, sese ngena ngapambili, sese nyatiele pana papweza, otu dakuma ndivela, ndiyesu, read to the point, yoba. And ndifuni ipuiza. Uchulmende, osipete yo. Mga yega uktisi funa umshaba tina. Asipriperenge male. Imali, we can do it according umshaba. We can do farming. Senzi imali. Na zoe da wifuni betelela. Chale ngapambili. Ngos.
Yeah. Enga diga she, shimpala manji. Uh, womanji, sese, sese tishwaka. Nomad shwaka. I want to chat.
Ndibulishe, kumakosi ezole lakowe, mna ngingu tembe sa, soka. Ndibulishe, na kuin members of parliament, ndisuka eh Hazelton. Kinda we, esakbizwa ekpumleni CPA. And ma, glenda o. Ndi mela abantu bakuti, nomadenga mtumanga. Abate mbengo babevotile ngo nineteen ninety-four. Wapaka muchulmende waspatari program, kavukuzenzele. Babaka mabantu bakuti baamba, babaka mabe zamukuzenzela. Sislelinye ralo makela, wabanda bazamukuzenzela, safuma nomshaba, sese benza NGOs. Ndi kumbula uye ka, uña kaka two thousand and two, ulenda fez. Eszaineli chekenkulu, esni kese, lestuyastenge, nomshaba. Koto na namshanjitaito titas kabina yomshaba wetu. Na namshanjis, sisa sokola. Na namshanjis, sisa sokola ndoba masfuma nisve, sese kufanale kleyo njenga bemiba se South Africa. Imbe ndu, lesi ifuma na yonga makashamaninze, yoba nisheli kui private land. Namshanjis, klasme glenda o, sizo omisal omtheto. Nditale ndoba ze kuti klee, pilie amendwa yoo. Ze szeni nga sishinga pande, niyambe niyochongizwa manamshanjis kabana swoto asiba mnyama. Because abantu balua paga tkuetu, bafuni pisizo umshaba ezko yo, aba katalanga nebuze wa ifuma na kanjani. Koto bangabute wa fuma nda yokeala, nditale kutige, maluga parliamente go banizile pamo kuetu. Nisiza, nditale omtheto nenga utati kashelite. Kubani zama, ndoba, there's other processes, sifanale zinzenzi we. Kotoa, itashelite, niltata yotine zanzi sia limala. Zi, si fana nje, ndongati si nyavuzuwa zi elephants. Ndi atale kakulu, ngos.
Next.
Malweni. My name is Ivwendondo from Gokulete. And also a member of the Economic Freedom Fighter. I am of the opinion and I highly support the call for the subsection twenty-five to be amended. Uh, such section twenty-five shall be clear and transparent from the word go of its intention and not contradict itself, which end up being manipulative in the process. Okay, for the purpose of this section, one point eight, the public interest includes the national commitment to land reform and to reform to bring about equitable access to all South Africa's natural natural resources and to be, property is not limited to land, ngos.
Okay, sen tati zantazoktri na ya, sese singa, kumbuli bugati zantazakosi person, kala ngao, number one. Number one. Uh, I'm taking the last hands now, right? And the very last, so that we conclude this process. And number two. Him, number two. Him. Number three. Yeah. Uh, number three. Uh, number four. Him, yeah. And number five. Him. Yeah, number five. Uh, number six. And, uh, number seven. Do me, the number seven, yeah. That standing one, number seven, that one. Yeah, he rushed. And then, number eight, at the back, right at the back. Right. Uh... Right, hey, nifuni kulmananki? Ow! Are you uncovered? All right, let me take this, this, this round, I'll come back for, for the next round. Please, if you are covered, you can stand up and say I'm covered. All right. Kala ngao, your mom. And sese, sese, sese. I have not come yet to put it at, at the table, still have a bit of time to do it.
Bulishe, amalunge parliament. Ndibulishe, na basale ngopela, ndinga buliwalango, bulishe ngosizi, chespa katu. Um, naika mandingnolba balo wakwanchansu, ndisuka kwalanga. Kala nje, ndifuna nje, ukai taku ndo eti, nde aybulala, nde wulela, nomshanga, ngoba. Ikona nje, ndo eva misukwenza, kendo basifwe, seltwa, ndo yenze gile, singa kanga si fuma. Ndibulela, ndo basi si fume nelthoba. Ogo kala, ndizautsho nditi, ewe. Seso ange stulikulwe linye lo ba, nomtheto ma amendwe. Oba umshaba ma utatwe, une kese loe, abantu ini. Ngoba ipshungu, ndi incha lespila panskwa yoo. Umze kala, panskwa peswa, asiwé. Senza ka yongonga, bina umshaba. Kukwindo ipshungu, abantu bezama ugunneda. I NGO's, ziti zama ugunneda, sifuna inda ozo, osa benza la. Zenga ifuma ngutwa komaspala, li nda eti advertise we, itengi we. Ni tuklenda, wini sheli kuwe, utu ofunuko nda komaspala bango, gabano umshaba. Kutwa, ngoga mister Opas. Glenda, wieni sheli kuwe, kwalanga lokshin. Kutwa, ngoga mister Opas, lamshaba, nenau pacha. So ipshungu, ndi incha lespila panskwa yoo. Inga tinyani, inga kawlesisa, lende kretu. Sizo kwa zuke, omister Opas, ababa pume, ekshali nkuetu. Si kwa zufuma ni mshaba yetu, ngos.
Man tatal thoba. Ben dizau, kashel ngos, njenja deskashelo ngak, kakande fban, ngos banu lapanga paga. But man kashel is.
We, we, we give you three minutes, by the way.
Three minutes?
Yes, three minutes, because I now understand that people who came in after I spoke and don't know that is a three-minute rule. Three minutes and you focus on the issue.
Let me not waste my time by criting then. Uh, I, Lonabo Mtena, state that I support the expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land. And the land question and the expropriation of land without compensation is part of that process. Were convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. Uh, for the ANC, the land reform is about redressing historical injustices and dispossession of the black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth and promote socio-economic transformation. Uh, the land reform programme provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and then show food security. We submit that, uh, on section twenty-five, clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they are, do not touch them. Uh, on clause number two, we make the following amendment. Add the new subclause two C, which must read as follows. Subject to without compensation or nil compensation under conditions laid out in the law of general application. On clause three, which speaks about property, we make the following amendment to the first line of the clause. Everything that remains, that comes after remains the same. To read as follows. Where compensation is payable, the amount of compensation and the time and manner of payment must be just and equitable. Uh, on clause seven, we make the following submission. That for the purposes of the hearing, only the text remains as is. Uh, on clause eight, we make the following amendment in the first line of the clause as follows and everything thereafter remains the same. No provision of this section, including the payment of compensation, compensation, may impede the state, etcetera. Uh, we fully understand that the issue of land uh, is more important than life itself because we believe for you to be able to be alive, to feed yourself, to even drink, uh, you need land.
Uh... Aye. Umshaba yes, or not, it's katsaspraneed.
Ndi abulishe, akwa bamsheli ngapambili, nabango ngabo na. Ndibulishe, nabala apa, eh olweni. Mna ngingu nomvoyo, wakwantete. Ndisuka apa, eh ka ilicha, eh down two, kinda we, kutwa kuse silver down. So, mna, andaz, no banzo puma imtolo nka nguna, abati, kotoa, kele, ndo ndizele yoo, apa. Ndo ella, umze. Malunga, nené, the subsidies abantu, ezikiwe yoo. Ukwa abantu abasashale tafeni, from twenty twelve. Ogo babelinde, ukwa kelwa, zikampani. Siaambi, nlesisi sangapambili yonge lendo. But nditela namshanjis, wesu ngokelis lapanga pambili. Zenga nyatelinge nyao, namshanjis. Ukwenze, ndo banba zilande lele yonge lendo, ya abantu, izinzo zabantu, ezikiwe yoo. Ngabantu, abesi contractors, is subcontractors, abantu babet sitiba yaka. Andazige, ndo banba. I officials, yenze kanjani, ukuzo zipada, ndo zenga kanga isboni, ndo banba. Inju, imile, so kusainwe, so sifuna nilande lele longo. Ni boni, ndo banba, umdu sashale kwekiombeni, kotoa, kusaini wa kutwa unenju. Isubsidi yake, ai seko. Sitela ge, ndo zinjalo, eh silver down, apa eh down two. Kukwa uma momdala, awa yekriti ngo twenty twelve september. Uselene tafeni na ngoko, inju yake, iselitonga, isenga mapo.
Sorry.
So sina matonga.
Goba, goba, ndo utabalako, no specific.
Eh.
Eh, lukwile nalulu.
Hmm.
Nkali kuti, ubano opalado. Uh, ukuma naleantse zonaye, uye giyoni. Izo bisialpa, lita tidelangbayako, masi lipegana ngongo, nalulu utabalulu.
Okay. Ndi abulela.
Nkali ugiyena njenga manji. Se bonka. Uh, yes, umshalisho.
Uh, ngos, umshalanga pambi, manbulishe. Uh, ndikashale, ngosizam, ndi afukuzbona, sekona, abanamshanjis. Ikamalamdi, umzanyo, ndibongo, ndipuma kui ka ilisha elfora. Isia isapote, ndoba, ngaba ma utatwe umshaba, ubuiselokwantu babo, kapandela, kwekweykeso. Asisboni isti, ngos, okwakuwa twa banu mababuyese, mababuyekeso, klabet tato umshaba, kubopikos. Ba ubalo umshaba, ngo abo. Abaniga sbomshaba, abana umshaba, njepashtet. Koto, umshalanga pambi, nochulmende, isa ofuna, lente traki, usekagushle. Eh, le amendment, izanykwenzio, akuba ngokwenze, kikeo, sida wesu talaguzo. Na njenga, ndi umtokoke la, ipo ngale zenpilo, apa ka ilicha, abantu batatu umshaba, kufanba, kwa kiwa, i, 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 isa kiozese npi. Awkwa zukubekeka, krosa, banu bazakuwa, bazukwa zukunnedagala. Paya yegya, sabekfama, yegya extend, angokwiklini kia kona, kwa zustende. So sitela, banu, kuti klabet tata, nomshaba, bye, understand, ndo kuti. Go ukilomshaba, kute twa ngao. Awkwa zukuta, ndo ekwa kumtuwako. Umshaba esetanga, lupaya estelen poche. Lemme try, ngakoma masperi, ukinyuka yonge west coast, ucho nganga panga se, nganga se, ngasi south and cape. Lo unabelu. Apo sisa otis fuma ne, obobuchie besitis ya bulala. Sizo kwa zufuma na, obobu ngono, sipfuna yoo. Asna kwa zubufuma na, kashkeli kwezinda o. Ngoko kinda, yoko lusewa kuzongabia, umshaba ngosizam, ndoba zikona, utati. Abantu anabetwa, bazukwa zukula, bati velopege. So abantu beitu, aban bebekona, abati, batata each and every spaces on shaba. Masia ambeni, siye kwezinda o, si nomshaba, awa tato ngabantu, abasuka glamaso. Aba uklay mayo, ngos, siyango ibiteta, ibititi, imitshaba esnayo, i onu akoma europe, kwenzu imali. So sifuna sikuwa zuba, umshaba wetu, uputiseti, namshalanga pambi. Sia isapote, akakulu longo, le, kotoa, siyas, doguti, ita, bidetu. Malinkes, si kwa kuti, tinabansu, ubu, ubu, ubu yekeso, umshaba, sitabata, ndo umshaba, ngos.
Kela nboni sakapambi. Uh, mna zau chunjeba, nditi, ndi isapote amendment, ca section twenty-five. Ge zatu ziti.
Ke uba?
Oh, ikamanguluko, olonokobele, ndishala pikias. Uh, uprasenzuma, wake wati neyminye. Our problems in Africa started when over and rebeg landed in the western, in the western cape. Edinti, tinyani, inga sisa kala, umshaba, kafika, abanbevalla, kalkali. En abanbevalla, gebey vela, ndoba, situmshaba, sisa utelo, ngoko, askanwi, sisa kuwa ngelile. Tukwadaza, ifika klanxa ba, sitati zinzi, ndo kengo, ba, kuli, ube kobi. si tati zinzi indoke ngo ba kuli yobe kobi.